At this time, I'd like to open a public hearing for the ordinance authorizing and directing the town of Batesburg Leesville to enter into an intergovernmental agreement relating to South Carolina Local Revenue Services to participate in one or more local revenue services programs to execute and deliver one or more participant program supplements and other matters relating thereto. Do I have anyone who would like to speak in this If there are none, I will close the public hearing for the ordinance authorizing and directing the town of Beale to enter into an intergovernmental agreement. And at this time, I will open up our meeting for the regular town council meeting of Batesburg Leesville. It is 7:01 PM Town Hall Complex in Batesburg Leesville. All watch is going on. At this time, Pastor Kent Suits, if you would come up, please, and start us off with the dedication.
Appreciate the opportunity again, and excuse my casual attire. I know it's not much more casual than I usually wear, but I do have a softball practice I'm coming with tonight. From 1 Corinthians 15, the famous passage on the resurrection, we just finished celebrating Easter, most of us. 1:10 says, "But by the grace of God I am what I am, and His grace towards me was not in vain. On the contrary, I worked harder than any of them, though it was not I, but the grace of God that is with me." Would you pray with me? God, we thank you for your grace. We thank you for your strength, for the ability to do everything that you have called us to do. I thank you for these men and women that serve this town, for their leadership, for their cooperation with one another. Lord, they would not be able to do any of these things if it were not for your grace. And so now I pray for grace upon grace, that you would grant them the strength to lead, the wisdom to guide, the love and the unity to work together, and to help those that they have been called to represent and serve. And, Lord, we pray for tonight's meeting to go well, for the conversation to be cordial and friendly, and that you would give them much patience and care for one another, and wisdom as they discuss things for the benefit of this town. Pray this all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Kent. Stand for the pledge if you are able, led by Mr. Gambrell.
Good Lord, please, in the light of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the best of circumstances.
Thank you, sir. Approval of the agenda, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Mr. Prowse, do I have a second?
Sir.
Second, Mr. Gambrell, any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District votes yes.
Four?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes. Motion passes. Adoption of the minutes from the regular council meeting, March 13th, 2023, do I have a motion to adopt?
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion to adopt council meetings on March 13th.
Thank you, Mr. Gambrell. Do I have a second?
I'll circle.
Mr. Hall, any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes. Motion passes. For the mayor's report, our next regular council meeting will be May the 8th, 2023. Cruising along in this year. Council committees report, Central Midlands Council member Hall?
Yes. Central Midlands Board did meet on March 30th at the Harvest and Midlands Tech Center. Major items discussed were consent agenda, which had two amendments to the LRTP and five amendments to the 2027 TIP program. We have a special guest Mr. Ron mentioned. Executive Director of Berkeley Charleston Door Test Cog spoke on how that cog was structured and functions. The current Midlands Tech cog is going, Midlands cog is going through a period of chaos, I would actually say. We have an interim director and gave us an update on the issue with funds dispersion with the agency of aging. This included the fact that the agency indicated cog was not adequately staffed and recommended the addition of up to eight new positions. There's one problem there. Chairman Simmons stated facility would not be able to accommodate such an increase and appointed Councilman Darrell Hudson of Lexington County to work for planning a new, for planning options. All right. Due to a conflict with the regular meeting of SEOT at Seawell, there was no one from SEOT there, so no discussions. That's our next meeting will be April the 27th.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. EPAC, Councilmember Prowse. EPAC did not meet in the month of April, so I have nothing to report. Thank you, sir. Recommit Advisory Committee, Councilmember Kane?
So, we've met, and we've met with the Finance Committee, and we have another meeting coming up Wednesday, and in the general meeting. And one of the major contenders is Route 97, and trying to get Lexington, get some clarity on how Lexington County plans to pay for that route. But obviously, there was some discussion about whether that contract of Lexington is still valid, and if it's not valid, how does a agency like Batesburg gain service? So, we're working on it, and I know Teddy's working hard on it. So, we'll get it.
Thank you, sir. District Wise, I haven't met since our last meeting. And next on the agenda is Beale Chamber of Commerce update. President Mike Taylor. Mr. Mike?
Good evening.
Good evening.
If I may, I'm going to kind of go over a few things that have happened since last block that have already passed. We had a place of town was held on Saturday, March 18th. The council retained the chef of the year. It went from Councilmember Barbara Brown to Bear Shaw. I appreciate y'all being there and giving your time and your effort and culinary expertise for that end, and all chefs that showed up and those bought tickets and enjoyed the food also. Last month, I reported that David Darty with Small Business Development Center would give a presentation at our General钦ship meeting. His presentation about services offered was, will be a great resource for the chamber in that. Thank I talked to y'all earlier, each businesses that may be running into some problem financially or one of marketing and so forth, they are for free services. I went to businesses throughout the community then and told them about it. I also had the brochures of his card there, and we had several businesses that aren't members of the chamber did show up, and I got that information. I'm thankful for that. The Batesburg Municipal Alliance had the Good Friday Community Service held at Whitburn Lutheran Church. Each of the seven last words of Christ while on the cross was presented by seven members of our community. Each year, this is just a truly meaningful experience for those that attend, and I thank them for the opportunity to be there. When I would give an opportunity to the chamber, if something is said to us and we have an opportunity to put it on our website, our Facebook page, we do, if it's an event or whatever. I received a call from the Patricia McKinney Foundation. And the reason I'm bringing this up, they will hold a, will host Young Queens where Beauty Meets Fashion Runway on June 10th from 1 to 4 at Batesburg Leesville Leesville Sound. Hopefully, their presence on our community will benefit us. And the reason I'm saying that, when I got that information, I looked at their website to see exactly who they are and things of that nature. This is a 501(c)(3) foundation that specializes in bringing change and transformation in the lives of teens and young adults, women and families. It specializes in prevention and intervention services for those dealing with social issues, and also those that have been victimized or come from traumatic situations and need guidance. And walking, going through the community and talking to business owners, just, you know, even when I was a car, we'd pickate my car, we'd talk about motor cars. When we're going to business, we'd discuss problems with children, workforce, and things like that. And I've had a lot of conversations with previous that I mentioned about David Darty coming in there. And I'm going back a second, I apologize for that. But we got together some of the board members and Middlesex Technical College, Tom Levitt, years ago, tried to come up with some form that we could do if business got in trouble. So, we couldn't come up with it. This is a great opportunity to use of that source. This is a great opportunity for our youth in the community, those parents that are struggling, and young mothers and so forth, that benefit from this from this foundation, hopefully. So, I hope they're successful. We've come up with a word out there. South Carolina Poultry Festival will be here before we know it. The South Carolina Poultry Festival in Goptona will be Friday, May the 12th. It will be a shotgun start, no guns, and just a whistle, something like that, okay, at 10:00 AM. I wanted you to know this, too. Arts on the Ridge will host an artist introduction event on Saturday, April 29th, from 6 to 9, at Batesburg Leesville Sound. This is an opportunity for us to gather the names of artists in the community, what they do, whether it's pottery, paintings, or whatever, get their names, and also learn what Arts on the Ridge can do promoting their and I can lead to. So, we hope that'll be a good event. That's my report, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mike. Appreciate it. Ms. Judy, any public?
No, no, no sign. Very good.
Unfinished business. Second reading of the ordinance authorizing and directing the town of Batesburg Leesville to enter into an intergovernmental agreement relating to South Carolina Local Revenue Services to participate in one or more local revenue service programs to execute and deliver one or more participant program supplements and other matters relating thereto. Do I have a motion to adopt? Second reading.
So moved.
Mr. Hall, do I have a second?
Yes.
District Wise, any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
District three votes yes.
Four?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes. Motion passes. New business. Council votes excuse absence from last month's meeting for Councilmember Mitchell. Motion, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Mr. Gambrell? Ms. Lemon, do I have a second? Any discussion? District one? Two?
Yes.
Three?
District three votes yes.
Four?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes. New business continued. Proclamation for the Poultry Festival Day 2023. The South Carolina Poultry Festival is sponsored by the Leesville Merchants Association. And whereas the 2023 South Carolina Poultry Festival will be celebrating 37 years of existence in the town of Batesburg Leesville, and whereas with the dedication of the volunteers of the Poultry Festival Committee, the South Carolina Poultry Festival has been and continues to be one of the most popular and successful festivals in the state. And whereas the South Carolina Poultry Festival provides a day for the entire family to enjoy the many activities and events scheduled, and whereas the South Carolina Poultry Festival honors the poultry industry, which is vital to the economy, health, and well-being of our community, state, and nation. Therefore, we have resolved that the mayor and town council of Batesburg Leesville do hereby proclaim Saturday, May 13th, as South Carolina Poultry Festival Day. Do I have a motion to adopt the proclamation?
So moved.
Mr. Prowse, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Gambrell, any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes. Proclamation passes. I have a resolution for the Poultry Festival yard sale. Whereas the Leesville Merchants Association is sponsoring the annual South Carolina Poultry Festival on Friday, May 12th, 2023, and Saturday, May 13th, 2023. And whereas the town council of Batesburg Leesville has determined it is in the best interest of vendors participating at the South Carolina Poultry Festival to prohibit yard sales in certain areas within the Batesburg Leesville town limits, and no yard sale shall be permitted within the area of the Poultry Festival as shown on the attached map in your packet. Do I have a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Mr. Hall, do I have a second? Ms. Lemon, any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District three votes no.
Four?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes. Motion passes. First reading, new business continues. First reading of ordinance to annex property located at 143 Town Pond Road, consisting of 2.0 acres. This is Lexington County TMS 007100-06-056. As presented in your packet, do I have a motion to adopt first reading?
So moved.
Mr. Prowse, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wise, any discussion?
Teddy, how many houses are going to be, are we talking about, that we're annexing?
In this particular case, it's one house. It's along Town Pond Road.
Yeah, we did something else, though. Didn't we do like?
That annexation was for Phase 6 of the Summerlin subdivision on the backside. This particular request right here is right there on Town Pond across from the entrance.
Thank you. Any other discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District three votes yes.
Four?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes. Motion passes. I have E, first reading ordinance to annex property located along Town Pond Road, consisting of .5 acres, owned by the town of Batesburg Leesville. This is TMS number 007000-01-051. Do I have a motion to adopt first reading?
So moved.
Mr. Hall, second?
Second.
Ms. Lemon, any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District three votes yes.
Four?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes. Motion passes. And item 10, manager report. Mr. Luckadoo, if you would. Mr. Luckadoo, sir. Thank you.
All right. Quick update on some town events that have recently happened and are upcoming. We held our annual town egg hunt this past Wednesday at College Park. Probably the largest egg hunt that we've had since we began. Estimated around 1,200 people attended. Had about 500 children who took part in the egg hunt itself. We appreciate everyone that came out, and for those churches and organizations that took part in making this a great event. Our annual spring clean event was held on Saturday, March 18th, from 9 until noon. Had about 130 community members come out and take part. We had about 292 tires collected, which weighed about 4.25 tons. Had about 83 people that came out to have paper shredded. We are still waiting the final weight of all the trash that was collected, but it was a large amount. But we have not heard back from Waste Management yet on what it actually weighed. Our event coordinator is currently organizing a Batesburg Leesville kicking-off summer concert on Saturday, June 3rd. Cody Webb and his band will be performing in the, that evening, beginning around 7 o'clock. There are still more details being worked on at this time. Once we have those final details, we'll certainly let everybody know.
Where?
College Park at the stage. The Leesville Merchants Association will be holding their annual Classic Car and Truck Cruise in this Sunday, April 16th, from 3 o'clock to 6 o'clock PM on Main Street. They have partnered with Soulstepping and have asked for donations of new girls and boys' athletic shoes, sizes 8 toddler up to size 5 1/2, women's or 9 and men's, new athletic socks, preferably ankle or no-show socks. So, if you're looking for something to do Sunday and you want to go see some classic car and trucks, and also bring something to help Soulstepping, head on out to Main Street. Some project updates. Based on the discussions we had with contractors at pre-construction meeting for the liquid chemical feed project, they should get started with work this month at the wastewater treatment plant. They have been ordering materials over the past month. The first step of the project will be underslap piping and conduit for the building and to actually pour the building slab. They will start work once the block for the building has been shipped. Since last month's council meeting, we've had about 385 feet of 18-inch sewer line replaced off a major grabbing, grabbing trunk line in the area of Brookwood Drive. It was reported to the town that a sinkhole had started on this section of line. Once it was dug up by our crew, they found that the concrete sewer main had collapsed through this portion of line. After inspecting the rest of that line, it was determined this whole section needed to be replaced. This work was performed this past week. The contractors will be on site this week at the Davis Pond property, and will begin their cure-in-place piping work along the sewer veins leading from the plant back out through the Davis Pond property. One of the things we're still having to work on is that area at the head of the, at the head of the Davis Pond up close to Willis Street, it's just really damp and boggy and really hard to get equipment back in there. So, that's something that we're going to have to work on, reestablishing and cutting some rideaways, and probably have to possibly even bring in some matting for the equipment to be able to access the lines that are within that area. With regards to the water project, engineering and design is about 85% complete, and bidding is expected to occur in June. We are expecting to hear word by the end of this month on whether or not we will be awarded up to $14 million towards our project. We are working to secure three easements that are needed for our portion of the project, two permanent easements, and one temporary easement. Moving on to the financial update. Wow. Okay. The total for all general fund nonutility accounts ended the month at $1,448,878. The total of all utility funds, $3,619,977.33. Sorry, did it cut y'all's, at the end of? I could send that with those on there, maybe. Because I'm winging it right now, not having it out beside it. The, it's on the page. Okay. Thank you. The American Rescue Plan funds, we still have $1,899,000 in that, and the infrastructure revenue bond, $973,978.55. And the hospitality tax checking ended the month at $893,505, bringing the total of all funds to $5,962,360. The general fund operating revenues ended at 63%, $3,299,651, with the operating expenses ending the month at 79% for the year, at $4,145,420. The utility fund operating revenues ended at 78%, $2,583,397, with the operating expenses at 77%, $2,551,090. The Victims Assistance Fund, operating revenues have already hit 100%, or just under 100% at $7,486, and the operating expenses are at 77%, $5,779. And the hospitality tax fund is at 88% in operating revenues, $551,092, with operating expenses at 37%, $234,039.
Teddy, did you, the parks, the maintenance upkeep of the park, is that in the hospitality?
Yes. Parks and, Parks and Magnets are there.
Okay. Because, you know, Sunday, yesterday, we were at the Batesburg park, my family, and the grass, I mean, it's just, it's terrible. You know, and I don't want to get my house going out there after cutting, but is there any way that we can, in this next budget, increase the street department? Those are the focuses. We need to, we need more people, because I know they're trying to do their best. But if we want to invest $10 million in parks, we're doing the, the engineering, but just the basic upkeep of the parks and rideaways, and we need to really think about doing that in this year's budget, so that we can justify that expenditure going forward.
Yes, sir. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Luckadoo. Item 11, executive session. We have four items for this evening. Item A, receipt of legal advice and discussion relating to contractual matters with Gilbert Summit Rural Water District. Item B is receipt of legal advice and discussion relating to Ridge Spring Way of Water Service. Item C is receipt of legal advice and discussion relating to contractual matters with Waste Management. And item D is receipt of legal advice and discussion of contractual matters relating to the sale of town-owned property on Bookout Point Road, Sullivan County. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Mr. Hall, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Prowse, any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes. We are in executive session. Like a motion to return to the regular council meeting. Mr. Gambrell, is my motion. Do I have a second? Second, Ms. Lemon, any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District three votes yes.
Four?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes. We are back in regular council meeting. Item 12, possible actions by council, and follow-up to executive session. Do I have any motions?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Prowse?
I move that we direct town staff to enter into two contract negotiations with Waste Management based on the information that's presented to council in executive session.
Motion by Mr. Prowse, do I have a second? Mr. Gambrell, any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District three votes no.
Four?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes. Motion passes. Do I have any other motions from executive session?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Prowse?
I also move that we, we approve the contract for the sale of town-owned property on the Gap Point Road, as presented in executive session this evening.
I have a motion by Mr. Prowse. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Wise. Any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
District three votes yes.
Four?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes. Motion passes. Potential agenda items for next month's meeting, May the 8th, 2023. Do I have any motions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McCain?
Council, I've met with Joe Wilson in his office during our visit to, our visit to for National League of Cities. During that time, we met the ambassador to Moldova. Moldova is right adjacent to Ukraine. And so, we sat and had over an hour dialogue with the ambassador, and he would like to come to Batesburg to meet with the chamber and the Rotary. And so there is a proclamation, a resolution that I sent to Teddy, that I'd like for us to take a look at prior to the ambassador coming to Batesburg Leesville. And so, I'd like to put that on the agenda for consideration.
Okay. Motion by Mr. McCain. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gambrell. Any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Yeah.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes. Motion passes.
Yes.
Anything else for item thirteen, potential agenda items? All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Hall, second by Mr. Gambrell. Any discussion? District one?
Yes.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
Yes.
Six?
Yes.
Seven?
Yes.
Eight?
Yes.
And mayor votes yes. We are adjourned. Thank you.